Welcome, everyone. We'll go ahead and proceed with our first order of business, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll also call the meeting to order, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone. So today's meeting, obviously, the mayor is not here. He is on a conference, and I believe that our city manager is also on a conference. We will get by without those two leaders. So on our agenda today, we've got our introduction of employees that we typically have. We've got a consent agenda by Councilmember De La Sandro. And then we've got four public hearings this evening, and then we have no study items this evening. Is there anything that we need to change with the agenda this evening? All right, if not, then I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Councilmember Coulter, and seconded by Councilmember De La Sandro. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? That'd be six-zero. All right, we'll move on to our introduction of new employees. It looks like we've got a fair number of folks that are coming up here. Carl?
Mayor, council, pleasure to be with you this evening. This evening, I'd like to introduce five new employees in Public Works. Four of them from our engineering group and one from our utilities group. So, you know, I'll just dive into them. So Yunus, I can step forward. This is Yunus Abdullai. Yunus is originally from Somalia in Africa, but he's been living here in the Twin Cities for the last 15 years. He comes to us with a degree in civil engineering from North Dakota, University of North Dakota. Prior to starting with us, he had worked as an intern in the city of Minneapolis. And he enjoys playing soccer and basketball, and he admits to being a Vikings fan as well. Yunus.
The mayor and council members, City of Bloomington, thanks for having me here. I like being here so far, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Well, welcome. And I'm also a Vikings fan, too.
Nice.
Although my wife's a Green Bay Packer fan.
Nyla? Nyla Grabowski is engineering tech with us in our engineering group. She's been a resident here in Bloomington for about three and a half years. She came to us with a degree in civil engineering technology from South Central. Outside of work, she enjoys gardening, hiking, and spending time with friends and family. Nyla, welcome.
Thank you. I really enjoy living here, and now I really enjoy working here, too. So thank you for having me.
Welcome. If I could get some advice on gardening, I did my first tomatoes this year, only got five.
It wasn't a good year for tomatoes.
Wendy Hickey? Wendy is also a civil engineering technician. And she's been living in the east metro area for a number of years. She received an engineering, computer aided design degree, and she's been working at MinDOT for the past six years. Three years in the field in their bridged and structural department, and then three years doing inspections on bridge projects. Outside of work, she enjoys time with her family, gardening, scrapbooking, and spending time outdoors. So Wendy?
Thank you for having me here, and I'm excited to work for the City of Bloomington.
We're glad to have you.
I'm Katie. Katie Mayo is an engineering technician in our GIS area in engineering. She grew up in St. Paul and did her bachelor's work in Canada at McGill University. I didn't ask if you speak French as well.
I do.
So you do, so by English, so that's a good skill to have. Following that work in Montreal, she received a certificate in GIS at Penn State. She's worked at the City of Minneapolis as a GIS intern, where she's kind of honed her teeth on GIS. She enjoys traveling and silk screen printing. So Katie, pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I've been here about a month, so still kind of figuring everything out, but I really liked it so far and happy to be here.
We're glad you're here.
We are.
And our final employee to introduce has tried to be here a number of times, and we've kind of crossed paths at least three times. So happy to introduce Abdul Kani Ishmael. Abdul Kani goes by Kani. Kani, come on over. Kani is an operator in our water treatment plant. He is a veteran of the Army, and where he spent three years, much of that time in Germany. And that's where he learned water treatment and all the technical things associated with that. He had been living in Denver, but recently moved to the Twin Cities, and we're excited to have him in our water treatment area. Kani, thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here, and I'm glad to be here. Bloomington is a great place to work, so I'm excited to work with Bloomington. And nice to meet you all, so that's a lot to say.
It's great to meet you, and my grandfather was a World War II vet in Germany. Yeah, different times, huh?
Yeah, different times, but nothing changed.
I lived there, too. I know what you mean. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank all of you for coming to the City of Bloomington. I know we all, if I can say this on behalf of the council and the mayor who's not here, just appreciate the work that you have already done and you will do. Thanks for being here. Much appreciated. All right, so I believe that Councilmember De La Sandro has the consent agenda?
I do, Acting Mayor, thank you. I was going to hold 3.7 myself anyway. It sounds like Councilmember Coulter would also like to hold 3.7, and I think you also, Councilmember, wanted to hold 3.8. Does anybody else have any holds? Okay, well, then, that means that I will request approval of our consent business, 3.1 through 3.6, 3.9, and 10.
Second.
We have moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Six-o, and it does pass. All right. Which I don't know, would you like to take up next?
Yeah, let's just do them in order, I think. So Councilmember Coulter, I believe you wanted to hold 3.7 around the SAFER grant just for awareness purposes, right? That was essentially my task as well.
Yep, that's correct. Just an explanation. I don't know, Chief Seal, if you'd be willing to just explain a little bit about the SAFER grant, what it means for the department, and so on.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, as you've been noticed, we've been awarded a SAFER grant. That is to cover the costs, salaries, and benefits for 18 firefighters for three years. This is what I'd call a good beginning. We've started laying a first block and a foundation for some significant change in how we provide fire service in the community. But it's a significant step, so.
If I may, thanks. Thank you, Acting Mayor. So Chief, I know that there's been a question. We had already planned, I believe, over the course of the coming years, to increase our firefighter roles by 18 to begin with, which is the reason that the grant was requested for that number. Is that correct? I mean, what I understand is we were approving as part of the potential budget this year, six staff, and then another six the following year, and another six the following year? Is that?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, six, six, and six. The two numbers aren't necessarily related.
Okay. In your opinion, does this grant impact that, any decision or any request that you'd make? Because that's really ultimately the question that individuals are asking.
So if you recall, I came to council with a plan. You'd requested a plan from me on how the fire department needs to look. And that plan is rather long-term, but we were looking at acquiring or having 75 career people and 60 paid-on-call people. When we look at growth projections for the next five years and the amount of construction that's happening in the city, you know, we're behind. Now, I understand there's balance that needs to occur, and that's what my boss does, is strike balance. But 18 is that first block and the foundation. We need to continue to add to that.
Very good, thank you.
Anybody else? Pretty much solved up all the questions I had for you as well. Because I was very curious, Chief, you know, in terms of, you know, as we look to try to make decisions, as we kind of move forward, and understanding, you know, as Councilmember De La Sandro has mentioned, you know, the amount of that levy that we're asking, a large portion of that is fire. As we look to try to, you know, build that up and get it to where we need to be at in order to have that full-time and paid-on-call balance, we're going to be looking at that very carefully to see what makes sense kind of moving forward. And what I think I heard you say was that getting this grant doesn't necessarily let us off the hook from that overall number.
Acting Mayor Lohman, councilmembers, I don't think, even in my wildest dreams of superpowers, do I have the ability to let you guys off any hook.
Well said.
With that, then, Councilmember Coulter, you want to move the item?
Yes, I will move to adopt a resolution accepting the SAFER grant awarded to the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Pass is six-zero. Councilmember De La Sandro?
Well, Councilmember Coulter wanted to hold 3.8 regarding the Hennepin County Joint Powers Agreement related to our social workers.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to call attention to this. I know this is a program that we've all discussed, and this is just approving a joint powers agreement between the city and Hennepin County to continue to fund our embedded social worker program. And I just wanted to call this out. I know this has been incredibly successful, and I think it's just really, really remarkable, doing some really good work as we think about sort of the need, the public safety needs of the community, and really responding to those in a way that doesn't just sort of send folks to the correction system when they need other services. So I just wanted to raise that up to the public and acknowledge the good work that our embedded social worker program is doing. I don't know if anybody else has any additional comments on it. I'm not seeing.
I'm not seeing anything either.
So I will go ahead and move to approve a joint powers agreement between Hennepin County and the City of Bloomington.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll go ahead and move right into our public hearing. Number one, it is a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the city code relating to alcohol beverage control and related fees.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Lohman and council. If you remember, I was back on August 15th. I went through all these items with you, and you told me what you wanted. So this should be a pretty easy one tonight. So thanks for teeing that up for me. So these are some of the changes that they are made at the state level, and we're just finally playing some catch-up now and getting them into code. Most of them are pretty straightforward and simple, probably won't be too impactful to us. Though the big one is the FIFA tournament coming up, so we want to make sure we get that letter out this weekend. I'm getting ahead of myself, so. So first off is cocktail rooms. Again, we don't have any of these yet, but maybe someday. Cocktail rooms were limited to just the small distilleries, and now they opened it up to all the distilleries, basically. So if and when we get any of those, we'll have that on the books for them. Next up after that, Growlers. I know this one kind of throws everybody for a loop. Again, the small brewers are the only ones that were allowed to sell off-sale. It's an additional license in Growlers. Now that's been opened up to larger brewers, not the big ones. We don't have any Budweisers, per se, but it's still kind of the middle range, if you will, can now have off-sale licenses, too. Again, we don't have any of those in town, but again, maybe someday, and we'll have that ready for them. But for the little guy, not only Growlers, but they can now sell other off-sale items up to 128 ounces in combination of Growlers, Crawlers, cans, and bottles. And this is something that Nine Mile has mentioned to me that they are interested in. So instead of Growlers having that big jug, you might be able to bring home a six-pack, something you don't have to open up and have it get flat on you. So interesting to see what comes of that. Temporary liquor licenses, if you remember, we've had this once or twice a year, where a nonprofit can apply for a temporary liquor license. Under the old statute and old code, they had to wait 31 days before they could have another one. And we did bump into this a couple of times. That 30-day limit has now been taken out of state statute, and we've adopted that also in our code. And like I mentioned, FIFA's coming up, or FIFA, I can't remember how it's pronounced, coming up here this fall. As we've done in the past with Super Bowl, RNC, things like that, the state has allowed an additional license or additional option for on-sale licenses to be open off-normal hours. This would be during televised events for FIFA. From what I could tell, these are some of the times listed. And so basically, if anybody wants this, they could start selling at about 3:30 a.m. on those days, those matches are happening. Again, we'll send a letter out to everybody. We'll see what kind of response we get. If we do have anybody take us up on this, what we usually do is we put that into roll call notice so the street officers know why the lights are on in that restaurant when they normally aren't. And so we're all on the same page. Don't know what the response is going to be on this. We'll see. I haven't really heard any talk on this, but we'll have it ready for them. So tonight in front of you is our ordinance amendments and the resolution to publish that. If you have any questions, I hopefully have looked it over. Any questions, comments, anything you want us to tweak?
Well, Junker, thank you for having such a brief and right-on-point presentation. I like that.
Good for personal best here tonight, so.
Does the council have any questions about this? I know we have discussed this in the past, and we really chewed it up, and I thought, any questions at all? All right. If there isn't anything, then we can open up the public hearing to see if anyone would like to comment on this particular ordinance change that we're looking to make here tonight. Anyone in the audience like to make any comments on this particular ordinance? Is there anyone online that's looking to call in and make a comment?
No one on the phone for this item.
All right. Make one last final call. If not, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, six-zero. All right, well, we'll bring it back and look to have any comments that we have. Now that we've closed the public comment, any comments at all that anyone wants to make regarding this change? All right, well, seeing none, I would look for a motion to move this forward.
Mayor, I can make that motion.
Councilmember Mark?
I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the city code relating to alcoholic beverage control and related fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, six-o, and we have adopted an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the city code relating to alcohol beverage control and related fees. Summary publication?
Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the city code relating to alcoholic beverage control and related fees.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, six-o, for summary publication of the ordinance amending Chapter 13. Well, now we can move forward to our second item underneath the hearings and resolutions and ordinances. I see Brian Hanson making his way, and also Darren Rezak. We'll be discussing a resolution to approve assessment rolls for 2021 and 2022. We did earlier move some stuff forward for 2023 for further conversation. So if you guys are ready?
Excellent. Thank you, Acting Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight before you, I'm joined by Bob Simons, our senior civil engineer. Unfortunately, Darren Rezak was not able to attend today, so Bob is filling in for Darren this evening. And we're going to give a brief presentation on both item 4.2 and 4.3. So we'll be addressing both the 2021 101 PMP segments that were held over from last year to assessments this year, as well as the 2022 101. So I'll turn it over to Bob to kind of give a brief overview of the PMP program in general, and then I'll talk about the assessments in more detail, so.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Acting Mayor Lohman and council. If I get the next slide, please. I'll give a little bit of information on property owner contact and a little bit of brief information on the PMP, which many of you have already heard before, but I'll run through it quickly for you. For property owner contact for the 2021 101 PMP project, actually started a couple of years ago. In October of 2020, we sent out estimated assessment notices. Then we held property owner informational meetings in late October of 2020, followed by the city council public hearing to order the 2021 101 project back in November of 2020. The following year, after the project was nearly complete, we sent out final assessment notices in September of 2021 with information about another informational meeting to discuss the assessments, and then also a public hearing. Property owner informational meetings were held in late September of '21. And then at the council or assessment hearing in October of '21, we delayed the assessment of the Park Road area since that project was not going to be completed in 2021, but yet delayed to the spring of '22. So we delayed that at that time to the 2022 assessment hearing, which we're here for tonight. Prior to construction beginning in that Park Road area in the spring of 2022, we sent out notices to the adjacent property owners. And then we had, just recently, our final assessment notices were mailed out for that Park Road neighborhood back here in September 14th. We held property owner informational meeting last week, and now we're here tonight for the assessment hearing. Next slide, please. For the 2022 101 PMP project, we had estimated assessment notices were mailed out last October. And then we held property owner informational meetings at the end of October, followed by a city council public hearing to order the project in November of '21. Once again, prior to construction beginning in all of the neighborhoods, we sent out various handouts that construction was coming soon, things of that nature. Just recently here in September, we sent out final assessment notices to the adjacent property owners and held the property owner informational meeting to review the assessments last week, and now we're here tonight for the assessment hearing. To give a quick little overview of our pavement management program, or PMP as we refer to it, it was established back in 1991, so it's been in place for just over 30 years now. It was implemented to reduce the overall cost of street repairs by implementing the right action at the right time, whether it be a street seal coat, a street milling overlay, or a street reconstruction, which these projects include. We come up with a pavement condition index or a PCI value for every street segment in Bloomington. Every year, one-third of the city streets are walked, cracks are counted, fatigue is monitored on the street segments, and that's entered into our ICON database, and that's handled by our street maintenance department. And then we come up with a PCI value, which helps us to determine where those street segments would fall in the realm of the pavement management program. And then we come up with a forecast for the future, typically five to seven years, a map. And we use do spring drive rounds every spring to update that map based on upcoming projects or things that might not have deteriorated as quickly as we would have thought they would. And then we put those for each year, we bid all of those larger street reconstruction and street milling overlay projects into one big project to get a better economy of scale. So for example, for this year's reconstruction project, all of the three to four miles were bid into one large project to get a better economy of scale, which in turn helps to lower the assessments to the adjacent property owners, and then also lowers the city's portion of the project for all taxpayers. Brian will get into this a little bit more, but the cost share for our reconstruction projects is between the adjacent property owners and city taxpayers. Single-two- and three-family properties pay 25% of the costs for the surfacing. And curb and gutter, if there's not existing curb and gutter on their street, and we add it with the project. And all other property types, whether it be commercial or industrial, pay for 50% of the costs. The remainder of the cost for the project is covered by citywide property taxes. Our different PMP construction techniques, we have our street reconstruction, which the projects we're here for tonight involve the complete removal and replacement of the pavement section. If there's not existing curb and gutter on the street, it's installed per the city's policy on that street segment, and that's done by a contractor hired by the city. We have our street milling overlay technique, which is where a portion of the existing pavement's ground off, and then a new pit layer is paved over the entire street section. That's also done by a contractor that's hired by the city. We have our street seal coat, which is done internally by our city's maintenance division. And then we have our trail construction and maintenance technique, which would be the removal and replacement of the trail and/or crack seal and fog seal. And we both hire that out to contractors, depending on the size of the project, or we may do the crack seal and fog seal in-house with our city's maintenance department. Here you see the overall goal of the program, showing our pavement lifecycle. On the left, you see a normal road life, not including any maintenance. If we just reconstructed or built a street, didn't do any maintenance on that street, typical road life's about 20 years, can vary greatly depending on the existing subsoils. But with the implementation of the PMP, by implementing street seal quotes and street milling overlays at opportune times after the street reconstruction is completed, as you can see, it dramatically extends the life of the pavement. And I'll let Brian take over on the assessments.
Thanks, Bob. So I'm going to get into the special assessments here a little bit. So first of all, Minnesota State Statute 429 is what gives cities and municipalities the ability to assess for certain improvements, such as the ones before you this evening. The city's policy has been in place since 1962, so our policy for applying special assessments has been in place for quite a while. The city's policy is based on an adjusted front footage, so that's kind of the measure that we use, multiplied by the rate of the improvement to calculate the final special assessments. So the idea of an adjusted front footage is to equate all lots regardless of their shape, as though they're a rectangular lot. So we try to treat all lots, again, corner lots, if you have an odd-shaped lot, shallow lot, we try to equate them all as though they're rectangle, so that we have an even and uniform way of applying the assessments to parcels. Other cities use special assessments to pay for qualifying improvements and... Other cities use special assessments to pay for qualifying improvements, and such as the city of Bloomington, as we do, to pay for a portion of our PMP project. So first, I want to talk about the cost breakdown for the 2021 101. This is the Park Road area, so this was the segment that was, the assessments were delayed until this year because, as Bob mentioned, construction didn't start until the spring on this segment. So the total project cost that you see here is for the entire 2021 101, not just for that Park Road area, just over 7.1 million. So the surfacing, the total surfacing cost for that improvement was just under $4 million. So again, doing that math to get that 100% rate, if the city were to assess 100% of that improvement to the adjacent property owners, we would take that total cost divided by the total AFF of all parcels that are subject to a surfacing assessment, and then we get that 12343 AFF. So that's what we'd have to to charge per adjusted front footage to all the parcels to pay for that improvement 100% through assessments. As Bob mentioned, that's not the city's policy. We assess it at 50% and a 25% rate, depending on the the type of parcel. So you can see there how those numbers break down to generate our 60%, our 50% rate, excuse me, and 25% rate for surfacing. And then doing the same math exercise for the curb and gutter, we take the total cost of the curb and gutter, a little over 1.8 million, divided by the total number of AFF of parcels that are subject to that assessment. As you can see here, that number is lower than the surfacing assessment number, because as Bob mentioned, per the city's policy, if there's already curb and gutter in place on the street, the properties are not subject to an assessment for that improvement at that time. So typically, we have a mixture of streets that don't have curb and gutter in place and already have curb and gutter in place, which is why that number is that 21824 you see there. So again, just doing that math, that 8603 would be the 100% assessment rate to pay for that improvement 100% through assessments, and that's how you get our 50% and 25% rate. And I will note, too, that the assessment rates that are being applied to the 2021 properties are the same that were applied to the remainder of those streets last year when we assessed those streets. So those rates were locked in, so the people that are on this project are paying the same amount as the other street segments that were assessed last year. Oh, now it worked on me. There we go. So this is the cost breakdown for the 2022 101 project, as well as the surfacing and curb and gutter for the 2022 502, which is the American Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Project, which was included in the surfacing assessment this year. So the total project cost for both those projects is just over $10.8 million. Again, that surfacing assessment or surfacing improvement cost, total cost, was just over 4.6 million. So dividing that by the total AFF, we get our 100% rate, which is that 15653. And there you see the 50% and 25% rates for the 2022 properties. Again, the curb and gutter was just over 1.3 million, so dividing that by the total AFF, you get the 8609. And then the 50% rate and 25% rate are shown there. I will note that in the the agenda item, there was a cost breakdown that was included. And in there, you will see a couple of the improvements have asterisks next to them or little stars. The reason that is, is because if you were to multiply across that total AFF by the cost per AFF, that that rate per foot, you would notice that total does not equal out. The reason that is, is because there were three properties on the 2022 101 that were adjusted based on the Special Benefit Analysis Report. So those were manually adjusted down as a as a result of that. So the total will not equal across, and that's the reason why. And those adjustments were made per council at the September 12th council meeting. And there's one, the same would apply to the 2021 Park Road area, you'll notice that as well. There was one property that was adjusted down based on the Special Benefit Report as well. So there's asterisks next to that one as well. So next, I want to talk about payment options. So as Bob mentioned, we did send out the final assessment notices and final assessment amounts to the property owners on September 14th. Tonight, the assessment rolls before you for your consideration of approval. If approved, property owners who are subject to an assessment would have from this date until November 29th of 2022 to pay off their assessment in full or any portion of it of $100 or more. And if they choose to do so, no interest is applied to that principal that's paid. So there's there's the ability to reduce or avoid interest payments altogether if they are able to or want to pay their entire assessment before November 29th. After November 29th, whatever remaining balance is is with each property is automatically rolled onto the property tax statement. And then that balance is spread out evenly over 10 years with interest applied to the declining principal on an annual basis. Once the assessment is on the property tax roll, the only payment options for those properties are to pay the assessment amount or to pay the amount due with their property tax statement, which would be in May and October of that year. Or they have the ability to pay off the remaining balance in full at any time during those 10 years if they want to avoid additional interest being accrued. So unfortunately, we don't, the county does not accept partial payments after it's on the property tax roll. It's a common question we get is, if I have some additional dollars, can I help to pay that down a little faster? And the answer at this point is no. The only payment options available are with the amount due with your bill or the total payoff amount. I will note that we do have a hardship deferral for those that qualify. It's important to note, this is not a forgiveness of the assessment, but rather a deferral for those that qualify. As I mentioned, there are qualifying conditions that you must meet, and they must meet all the qualifying conditions. Those include you must be a senior, retired by virtue of permanent or total disability, or active military personnel. There are also low income requirements that must be met, and those incomes must be certified by the city. There's also house value requirements, and you must, the house must be homesteaded, or the parcel must be homesteaded in order to qualify. So if residents are interested in the hardship deferral program, they can contact our assessment department, and we can walk them through that and kind of give them an idea of what that would look like and if they qualify. Lastly, Section 429 also does detail an appeal process. So if homeowners feel that they are being assessed for improvements that are not requisite of the improvement they're receiving, if the assessment is above that benefit they're receiving from the improvement, there is a process for them to appeal their assessments once levied. That is done through district court, and the process for doing so is laid out in Section 429. So again, just kind of to kind of summarize, as Bob mentioned before, the PMP program is the right action at the right time. It helps prolong the city's pavement life. It keeps our city's infrastructure in good condition. It maintains or increases property values for the properties adjacent to it, and reduces the overall cost of maintaining those facilities here within the city of Bloomington. I do have a suggested motion. Before I do this, I do want to make note of the attachment that was provided to the council prior to the meeting. The MAC has a parcel that's subject to assessment in the runway protection zone along American Boulevard, and they did submit an email to staff this morning indicating that they were opposing their assessment at this point. We did provide them with our Special Benefit Analysis, so I think it's important to note that the calculated assessment using our assessment policy was 22,000 and change for that. Based on the Special Benefit Report, we reduced that to 6,000. That was before you in September, on September 12th of that action. So we did reduce that based on the Special Benefit Analysis. The MAC did indicate that they were not, or I don't want to say contesting, but did not want to be assessed at this time, so we did provide them that information. And based on their kind of unique statutory ability being that it's a it's a state, it's a state parcel, staff is recommending tonight that to approve the assessment role with the exception of that MAC parcel until we have some more time to talk with them and kind of get a feeling of what we read on that. And we would recommend coming back for council on October 24th of that additional parcel at that time.
So I know that city attorney wanted to make another comment on this.
Yeah, Mayor Protema members, just a point of clarification, Mr. Hanson, is that for this item or is that for 4.3?
It's 4, excuse me, it is for 4.3. So 4.2, the item, is for the 2021 101. The presentation is for both, so yes, that is a good clarification.
Okay, just a point of clarification. So that motion won't be in play until?
Okay, I was a little confused too myself, so I'm, we got that that straight now.
Yes.
So on the first one that I'm seeing before us right now, that that would not apply, but on the next one that we're?
Correct. So the motions before you, the first motion, and I should have clarified that. The first motion is for for Item 4.2. The second motion you see up there is for 4.3. The presentation included both, I just didn't want to duplicate my presentation.
So Mayor Protem and members, we would have two separate public hearings, though.
Correct.
All right. With that being said, I hope I didn't cut off any part of your presentation. I assume we got to the motion piece.
You got there.
All right, thank you. And I know this is kind of an opportunity for us to ask a few questions, so I don't know if if council has any questions, but you know, I've seen these over a number of years, they've come before the council. And one thing that I hadn't seen before, as I was looking through, is there was some type of comment about that St. Paul had been taken to court with regard to their assessment. And I don't know if this is for for you, Brian, or for the city attorney, but I was just curious about, you know, that comment, that someone had thought that, you know, that, you know, that this would not be a legitimate way of assessing. Folks, and I wanted to see if staff had any comment with regards to that and how they responded to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Yeah, we did have a resident at one of the informational meetings that did bring a article from this, from the Pioneer Press that was talking about St. Paul and the issues that they faced. And staff's response to that, I was familiar with 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 that article and kind of what St. Paul had been going through, and, you know, some of the the improvements that they were assessing for. And my response to that was, in Bloomington, we assess for certain improvements with our reconstruct project, and we have a process in place with our Special Benefit Consultation Report where we verify that the assessments that we send out meet, that the improvements that they're receiving and the benefit they're receiving from those improvements meet or exceed the assessments that they're being charged. So we are comfortable with that. I can't speak necessarily to St. Paul, maybe city attorney can speak more to that. But I think some of their assessments maybe not have met that threshold, but we make sure that we do that here at the city of Bloomington with our assessments.
And it's been around, as you've mentioned, for a long time. And and so I just think that's important. And also, as a part of that, we as taxpayers also pay a great deal of that each year as a part of that, as long along with the homeowner, business, or institution. Are there any questions at all, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions. You noted in the presentation that the previous year's items that were being held over, the assessment rate didn't change for the residents or businesses. Did it change for the city?
It did not. The the assessment rates were locked in with last year's assessment rolls, so those rates were just carried over to this year. So we did not change anything from the role that was before council in 2020.
So there isn't an additional cost that, because it got delayed, we're?
Correct.
Overlocked in?
Correct.
In this environment, that's great. The second thing, talked a little bit about the special assessment and then the benefit analysis, and this is something that comes up on pavement management program every year, right? And I think you noted there was one with the MAC that had been 22,000, looked at the benefit to that specific property, reduced it down to 6,000, notwithstanding their other concerns. That is a normal thing, that we'll take a look at what the benefit of those projects are to that specific property and adjust the assessment, correct? It's not an expectation that they'll always pay the full cost or the the full price of those things if they don't receive that benefit, correct?
That is correct, Acting Mayor, council member. So as you, as you, as you noted, every three years, we do a comprehensive special benefit analysis of the entire city. And they provide us with an average range based on the location within the area, within the city for a residential parcel. So that range is between 8,8500, depending on what's part of the city you're in. So if, when we do our initial estimates that we send out, if we have calculations that are that are near that number or exceed that number, we specifically ask the Special Benefit Council to do an addendum every year and look at those parcels specifically to let us know, is this higher than average assessment in line with the improvement they're receiving? And if it's not, let us know, or let us know what that improvement is, what that 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 benefit is, so that we can set our assessment accordingly. Additionally, for every non-residential or commercial or multifamily building, we have the Special Benefit Council look at those individually as well every year. And that's just our standard procedure, because those are unique and those ranges vary depending on the type of building, type of use. So that's a standard procedure for us. And typically, we have between, you know, three to five or six that we need to adjust manually based on a Special Benefit Analysis, which, to me, as a person that does those calculations, tells me that our policy is in line with the benefits they're receiving. If we were seeing a lot more outside of that range, I would, you know, have to take a harder look at our policy to see, maybe we're not in line with that. But I think that's a good check for us, tell us that our special assessment policy is in line with the benefits received.
Other questions? If not, we will move this to a public hearing here, and I want to just?
Sorry, Mr. Acting Mayor, I apologize.
No problem.
I had a question, and I wrote it down and then forgot to ask it.
Problem, perfect opportunity.
This is not necessarily related to the specifics, but I was just curious, where does the 4.5% interest rate come from? Is that, is that something that's been a standard in the in that from the very beginning as well, or is it just, like, do we do some calculation, or how does that come about?
I may look?
Sorry, Miss Economy Shuler.
Economy Shuler, does she, could probably answer that better than I can. She's the one who I go to for those numbers, so I'll let her.
Acting Mayor Loman and Councilmember De La Sandro, we look at a number of interest rate factors, what home mortgages are, what investments are going for, a whole slew of interest rates, and look at what's out there for a 10-year stretch.
Okay, so that means that it hasn't changed, it didn't change between 2021 and 2022?
Correct.
Okay. And and how often do you update it? Every year for that 10-year period average, or?
Yes, in fact, when we're looking for the following year for '23, we're increasing it back up to the 5% range where it was for a number of years, so.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Not a problem. Any other questions? And I appreciate that question, because I'm trying to make sure I had the the right streets down, so that gave me enough time to figure out which streets that I have. And so we'll go ahead then and open up the public hearing. And so just for reference, since we've got a number of assessments on the agenda, I wanted to just be clear what we're opening the public assessment for, for this first ordinance. And I believe it's for Street Park Road from 12th Avenue to 15th Avenue. Number 15 here is East 88th Street to 13th Avenue to 14th Avenue, and then number 16 is 13th Avenue to Park Road to East 88th Street. And number 17 is 14th Avenue, East 88th Street to East 88, 86th Street. Wow. Have I got all the the right ones for this one?
Yes, correct, Acting Mayor. And I just would note, too, this is for Item 4.2, it relates to 4.2, those sections are for 4.2.
All right. With that being said, we have a, we have the open public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council at the, about any of those properties? Please, if you'd come forward and sign in, your name and a way to contact you, and then just please be sure to state your name when you come before. And if I remember right, it's, is it five minutes to address the?
Yes.
I don't, I'm not sure which, which item it is. I'm on 10th Street, 10th Avenue.
10th Avenue?
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's a, that's the next one. But I mean, we could just, should we wait? Okay, so let's, let's hold off on that. And then when you come back up, make sure you give us your address, so we can get in touch with you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address those streets that I that I named? Is there anyone from the phone who's called in?
Mayor, no, no one on the line for this item.
All right. Seeing no one coming forward for these items that are there, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion, and I've got a second. Councilmember De La Sandro, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nay. Seeing none, it's six oh. Passed to close the public hearing for Item 4.2, which is a public hearing adopting a resolution approving the assessment rolls 2022-1. Is there any more conversation or discussion with regards to these, this particular assessment roll? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve 4.2, a public hearing adopting resolution approving assessment rolls for 2022.
Mayor, I can make that motion?
Thank you.
I will move that we adopt the resolution approving assessment roll 22-1 for street reference segments 14 through 17.
Second?
And I have a second from Councilmember De La Sandro. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, six oh, passing a resolution proving, a resolution approving assessment rolls for 2022-1. Now we can move to the next assessment, and we already had the presentation for that. So unless there's any comments at all that are questions that the council has, okay, So unless there's any comments at all that are questions that the council has, okay, Councilmember Nelson have a question about this particular one.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. On the map, the Louisiana section is noted on there, but I didn't see it in the list of properties. But it also had a reference of 2022-604. Is that part of this resolution or is just a note that that will happen with this construction? Or is it something completely different? Isn't that done?
Yeah. Acting Mayor, Councilmember, yes. So that was constructed, that was a Louisiana traffic calming project, and that was done per consent previously this evening. So it was listed on the map because it was part of, it was constructed as part of the PMP project, but it was paid for through the those other funds and the assessments that were petitioned and waived by those adjacent property owners previously. So that's why it showed up on the map.
Thanks for clarifying that. I did have a question about that, so I'm glad somebody else remembered that I had forgotten that on the hustle of today. Any other questions that we may have about this prior to me opening this up for a public hearing? With that being said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And now it would be appropriate for this gentleman to step forward and go ahead and address the council.
Hi, Councilmember. I'm very glad to be here. Thank you for this having this opportunity. I'm new to all this, okay? And I don't know, I mean, I'm not very knowledgeable about assessments. Number one, I live on on 10th Street, 10th Avenue. The first thing I noticed is that, you know, my question is, you know, when when I got involved about a road construction, okay, assessment, so why the road has to be redone? Honestly, the road that I'm living on, the street, is perfectly okay. It's not broken or it's not something, except it's not, it does not have a curb. So I was questioning myself, you know, why? Why was it? And then, you know, the street was built, paved, I believe, five to eight years ago And at that time, there was no assessment. So so my question is, why this time is different? Okay, so you want to to reconstruct the street and put a curb in, which is nice. But why now this time there's an assessment, but the previous time, there was no assessment? Okay. And this construction is a lot, a lot of money. So I want to make sure, even if now, if this is a process that is legit, well, it's good for us, did it go through a bidding process? And how are, how how do we assess? Okay, so these charges for these constructions, they are reasonable. And we are not being ripped off by ABC contractors. So I want to make sure we have controls in place that, you know, homeowners are not ripped. So I have these questions.
Doug?
All right. Acting Mayor Lohman and Council, I can try to address all the questions that that individual had. To begin with, why has the road, why does the road need to be redone and why assessed? I'll back up. The second question that the individual asked was five to eight years ago that the street had been paved. At that time, it would have been a street seal coat. So it would be where we add that two minutes adhesive to the existing pavement and put the aggregate on top of that and sweep off the excess. That's done by our city's internal maintenance department. So that's the street seal coat. That's just typically every seven to eight years, all the streets in Bloomington, we shoot for, get a street seal coat. Streets that don't have existing curb and gutter, like 10th Avenue, will only receive a seal coat, will not receive a mill and overlay because it's not conducive, not cost effective to be giving it a mill and overlay when it doesn't have existing curb and gutter. So when we did that work five to eight years ago for the seal coats, that is not assessed work. That's part of our city's maintenance department takes care of that. Why the road has to be redone? As I mentioned in the presentation, we go and we get PCIs for all of the road segments within Bloomington. And with the PCI, that's not, we don't use that PCI strictly to say, okay, it's in this PCI level, this work has to be done to it. But when it gets into that range, like in the zero to 35 range, that's when we start looking at it to be more of a reconstruct. Now, on street segments like maybe 10th Avenue, for example, there's portions of the of the street segment that might not have looked like they need to be reconstructed, but there's other portions that are definitely in that condition. So and 10th Avenue was was to that point. So with this work being done now, what we're here for tonight, for the assessment as part of the reconstruct, street reconstruction projects, we do assess at a 25 and a 50% rate to the adjacent property owners for those reconstruction projects. And in regards to the, I believe, the third question that was asked about the bidding process, we do go through a full bidding process for for these projects. We typically have a few contractors that bid on the on on each of these projects as we bid them out. We do, we, per the city's policy currently, we do take the low bid for those for that work. But the contractor also does have, does have to prove that they are responsible contractor for that work. So we do look into that to make sure that we're not hiring somebody that that isn't going to be able to do the work for us. But ultimately, we do take the low bid for these, this work that comes in. So and it is, it is typically pretty competitive, the bids that do come in because there's a lot of work out there that contractors are trying to get. So I believe that answers or addresses at least all the questions that were
Yeah, no, I think that 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 pretty much covers all of the questions that are asked. But there's one little piece of that I wanted to ask about with the seal coat piece that's there that was done seven or eight years ago. In fact, I had that done in our our property. Who pays for that? I know you said that that isn't assessed.
That's that's the city's general fund, covers the cost for the the street seal coats.
So essentially, all taxpayers in 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 Bloomington end up paying for that that seal coat that's done. And then you had mentioned that depending on what what type of property that you have, you can be anywhere up from 25% to 50%. Oh, I think I'm in trouble here. 25 to 50%. But the other 25 to 50% of that or 75% of that, that also, you know, because the the homeowner is responsible for a portion of that, that 25%, but then the rest of it is basically the city that gets to to pay for that fee. So it's, I don't, and I didn't want to hear this either, you know, when an assessment comes around. But, you know, it's not just the, you know, the homeowner that's impacted by this, it's also the rest of the city that's also chipping in and paying. I see Economy Schuler coming coming forward, so.
I think I know where I went wrong, but we'll
Uh oh. And I didn't stop you either. Uh oh.
Mayor Lohman or Acting Mayor Lohman, franchise fees are what we collect and as we need them for our payment management program. So they are used for the seal coat. They are used for the overlay. And and then they are used for the trail pieces that we have. So those are the the pieces that franchise fees are used for.
And I should know better, I voted on that.
Thank you.
So I apologize, my colleagues, on that. Is there anything else that we we missed? Thank you, Doug. Hopefully, that answers some of those questions. And I think, you know, absolutely, we've got to make sure that that we're paying attention to what's what's going on there and that there is value there. And we did talk about earlier about the special benefit there, and that is there and that that work that we do there does justify, you know, what what this does cost. And so there's a number of of controls on this process. Are there anyone else that'd like to address the the council on this particular assessment?
Well, I have a further question. I have a further question.
Sure, we can, we can, we can, we can take that. Just want to make sure there isn't anybody else who is calling in?
Mayor, no one waiting to speak on this item?
All right. Yeah, we can. I'm not sure how much time we've already used up. Two minutes, so you've got about two minutes left.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, you know, when they mentioned why the previous time they 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 didn't assess its seal coat, you know, to my knowledge, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger layer, you know, of of sand and asphalt. So I don't know what what they mean by seal coat is just a seal coating. It's it's actually a construction of a road. And, you know, if if it was not assessed, then maybe we got lucky or whatever.
You know, and that's a good point. If, I'm not sure if we could get that slide back up here because I think there's, isn't there a slide that has the different, if we want to just, just so we, just so we're just absolutely clear as to to what the process is? Because there's a number of steps that are taken with road construction. I'm not sure, is that the one we went there or?
Yeah, that would be the one.
Okay. So if you want to, Doug, kind of take it from here because this can be, you know, this can be confusing even to me.
Yep. And I can run through these construction techniques again. We have the street reconstruction, which is the projects that were before us tonight, which is the full removal and replacement of the pavement. We have the street mill and overlay, which is just where a portion is is ground off and a new layer is paved over the top. As I mentioned, for streets that do not have existing curb and gutter, we don't use the street mill and overlay technique. But the technique that the individual is is referring to is a street seal coat where it looks like there's a new layer of pavement over the top when we're done. It's a, there's a bituminous adhesive or an oil that's added to the existing pavement. Then aggregate is added to that. And when that that excess aggregate is swept off, it does look like a new layer of pavement. There is, there is a thickness to it there. But it's not, we're not removing any pavement and replacing any pavement when we do that. Now, with that said, sometimes when we come in and do seal coats, and I'm not for sure on 10th Avenue, our maintenance department will do some patching in the area. So that may be where the additional thickness was seen. But in regards to the seal coat, it is just that adhesive over the entire pavement layer and then the aggregate added to that, so.
Now, thanks for that, that clarification in terms of of those things. I want to be careful not kind of going back and forth with staff here. Thank you for answering that. Is there anybody else who wants to adjust the council on this particular issue? Please, step forward and if you could sign in, make sure you put your address on there. You can, you can mention it, you can sign up after you leave too.
Okay. Well, I'm just like the other guy. I'm behind on all these assessments. This is the only one that I'd have made it to.
If we could get your name and address, yeah. That's fine.
I'm on 13th Avenue. So been trying to keep up with this. Only question that I have right now is, I heard, I don't know whether I got any mail about the project. It was supposed to have been each homeowner, price tag was about 10,000. I don't know sure or not. So when I see this 50%, 25%, I don't know where I'm sitting at. I got the last order and it's 5,000. And I'm totally lost. One session that I tried to get online with, and I think I missed it or couldn't get in or something. I think my computer was messing up. But this is the only one I caught up with. I'm okay with the project. I don't know where the 10,000 come from, if there is, the homeowner prices on 13th Avenue. That's one of the workers told me. If I did get it in the mail, with the junk mail, I guess, I didn't open it or something. But if I am supposed to be paying like 5,000, I just want to be clear about it, you know, if that's possible. And I'm guessing all the homeowners on that street is build the same?
Well, I want to be careful because I don't want, I don't want to take your time that you're before. It sounds like there's there's some some questions in terms of information. Our staff can help you with that and they could get the details. I don't know if they can give you the direct details tonight. But, you know, if you want to come forward, if you're okay with that, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor or Acting Mayor, Councilmembers, to the gentleman's questions. I think some of the confusion may have come from when we initially alert the neighborhoods to the upcoming project, we provide them with an estimated assessment. So the first mailing was sent to the neighborhood in October of 2021. At that time, we use our estimated cost per foot to calculate our estimated assessment. So with that, we tend to be conservative in our, on our, our rates to give you more of a higher end of what your assessment might be before we come in with the final assessment later that following fall. So it is possible that some of those assessments were closer to that $10,000 number based on the rates that we were using for our estimated assessments. Again, as the projects went out to bid and we got the bid prices back, and then as we calculate our final assessments based on the actual work done, those costs per foot got lowered to that $39 roughly per the the surfacing assessment and then that 24-ish, I believe, for the curb and gutter assessment. So to the gentleman's question as well, I can provide you with that actual number this evening. I have that on my computer. So happy to step outside with you here and show you where that is and give you that final number so you have no confusion about what the bill is. And if you want, I can provide you another hard copy or email you another copy of that as well, so.
Hopefully, that helps to, and I know that the other part of what you said too was, and just so we're clear, on your same street, there can be different assessments because there are different front footages across the, across an entire street, you know? And so depending on what that that footage is, will drive what that that final assessment ends up being. And can that that amount come down at all? I mean, as we get closer to the end of the project?
So once the assessment, the final assessment rates are calculated, that is the final bill. So it was provided to them that was sent out September 14th is the final bill. Those are the final rates. What I was going to mention, thank you for bringing that up, Acting Mayor, is that, yes, the rates are, or the total assessment amount is based on the rate multiplied by the AFF or that adjusted front footage for each individual parcel. And that information is available on the city website if anyone is interested in looking at that. If you go to the city website and type in special assessments in the in the search bar, there is a link to, we do have an online platform, so you can sit, put in any address you want and see any pending assessments or any active city assessments on any parcel in the city. So that is available. So if you're, you know, if you wanted to see what your neighbor was assessed or someone down the street or another street on the project, you can see that and how that was calculated. It has the total amount and the AFF that was used to generate that, so.
Thanks for clarifying that. Did that, did that get you a little closer to where you wanted, wanted to be at or?
Yeah, that hit that a lot.
All right. I saw a couple of councilmembers maybe had a question, maybe I want to make sure I'm not cutting anybody out. All right. Well, unless there isn't anything else, we'd just like to get your name and information and then our staff can can help you and figure out exactly what that is. There's sometimes I, you know, put the mail in the wrong junk bill thing and my wife pulls it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this assessment Do one last check to see if there's anybody that's called in?
Mayor, no one online or waiting on the phone?
With that being said, then I would look for a motion to close our our public hearing.
So moved?
There's a motion? Do I have a second? There's a motion and a second from Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries to close the public hearing. So now we are looking at the the adoption of a resolution approving the assessment role of 2022. And I know that there is a change with this one here.
We're going to get it up on
And we're going to get that up here, is that?
Yep.
All right. So and this is, this is the motion, the way that that staff intends it and wants it?
Happy to make it.
All right. Councilmember De La Sandro?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution approving assessment role 2022-4, except 2800 American Boulevard East with a PID number of 01-027-24-11-0017, within street reference segment 12, and holding over discussion of that property within street reference segment 12 until the council meeting on October 24th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this particular motion to adopt resolution approving assessment roles for 2022-1 segment, street references 14 through 17. And I realize I didn't even read these ones off. But you know what? Let me just read these off into the record just so everyone is aware.
Mayor, for 14 through 17, 1 through 3 and 5 through 12.
Okay, right. Say that again. 1 through 3, 5 through 12.
Correct.
And it says up here, segments.
Oh, that's
So we got a problem.
Mr. Mayor.
No. Okay, we're on the second one, okay. I don't, I don't know that it's even necessary for me to read these into the record. And I'm not going to do that because I don't want to keep us here all night, so.
Once was enough, right?
Once is enough, right? Yeah. I think we're pretty clear on what what those were. So we've got a motion and we've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? It passes six oh, uh approving uh an assessment role for those twenty-two and street references uh one through three and five through twelve. Is there a summary publication? Uh, this one? Okay. So we're all set then. All right, we'll move along then. Thank you to staff on that one. Uh, now we'll move on to a public hearing uh with Oxboro Heights uh Development. I see our planner uh moving here, Mr. Senator Ariel. Good to see you again.
Likewise. Good evening, council. We'll just wait a moment. The presentation to come up. All right, thank you. So tonight, we're, we're discussing a significant redevelopment uh within the city's Lyndale Avenue corridor. In order to accomplish that, there's a number of entitlements uh that the developer is seeking. That includes a comprehensive plan amendment, uh rezoning, uh development plans, and then a plat uh to combine a few parcels. So we're all familiar with the, with the area. We're just east of Lyndale Avenue, uh east of Popeyes Chicken, uh Ninety-third Street. And so this, this parcel has been vacant for, for a number of years. I think it was a, it was a car wash and then that was demolished ten plus years ago, and it's been vacant since. Uh, that's, that's the main piece of land. Uh, there's also a vacant outlot just to the north off of Garfield Circle. And then a non-conforming uh single-family home at five twenty uh Ninety-third Street. Uh, that would, that would be incorporated into the redevelopment overall. Looking just a little closer, uh I've outlined those three parcels. And so we have the main six hundred uh West Ninety-third parcel, but then the other two really kind of make it a, a more uh significant site in terms of the density that would be permitted. This is what it, this is what it looks like today. There's some, a lot of broken up asphalt. Uh, all the building improvements have been removed. And uh, there's really, uh, what you see is what you get uh on this piece of land. So seeing some redevelopment opportunities is a, is a welcome, a welcome thing. Discussing the comp plan amendment briefly, uh with those three parcels, there's two different comprehensive plan uh designations. And here we, along Lyndale Avenue corridor, both on the west side of Lyndale and on the east side of Lyndale, uh, there's a lot of transition uh once you get away from Lyndale. Uh, it can be general business, uh where we have a lot of our retail uses that can transition to the single family. Uh, on the east side of Lyndale, you have a lot of commercial uses that, or industrial uses uh that turn, transition into more residential. Uh, so the, on the right, you see a interesting color combination. But uh, when we look, when we kind of zoom out uh in our comp plan designations, uh, we see that it's actually pretty common for us to have these pockets of high-density res- residential land uses intermixed with commercial, industrial, and low-density residential. That's just kind of the character of Lyndale Avenue, and this is kind of a more or less a continuation of that. So similarly, uh for the rezoning, uh two of the parcels are zoned for general business, uh which is more of a retail-oriented uh zoning district. And one is for industrial. And then all three parcels will be rezoned to RM fifty uh with the planned development overlay. And the fifty represents the uh by code up to fifty units an acre uh in terms of your dwelling unit density. And there was, you know, when, when we saw the industrial parcel incorporated into the development, uh, we, we had to think of a policy that the city has in order to try and protect industrial uses. And the comp plan has uh some, some guidance on when and where uh industrial properties should try to remain in, in industry. And in this case, uh, that parcel is a single-family home uh that's non-conforming. It's, it's, it's a home, but it's zoned and guided for uh industrial uses. And there is no viable uh industrial use on the property. And so by changing the designation from industrial to high-density residential, we're not violating the policy uh that was established in the comp plan. Moving on to the site plan itself, uh you can see the footprint uh of the building, a five-story building over a level of structured parking, a hundred twenty-five units, and then there's various levels of affordability. So this is a one hundred percent affordable development uh with three units at thirty percent AMI, uh twenty-two at fifty percent, sixty-nine units at sixty percent, and then the remaining units uh would be affordable at a seventy percent AMI level. Uh, so very significant uh number of affordable units uh would be added to, to Lyndale Avenue. Okay, thanks. And one thing, and when we have development projects along Lyndale, uh we're not only looking at the comprehensive plan, but we're also looking at our district plans, our area plans, and in this case, our Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan. Uh, and that plan talks a lot about uh mobility. Uh, there's, there's a lot of guidance on certain commercial nodes, but then there's a lot of general guidance on improving mobility. And uh, one way to improve mobility is to make sure that the sidewalks connect to each other. Uh, and as a code requirement, uh the developer would be required to put sidewalk in front of the building along the street. It does not require that sidewalk be connected to, you know, another street a block away. Uh, however, um, we asked and the uh, the applicant agreed uh that there really needed to be a sidewalk connection between the, the western property line and Lyndale Avenue. And so what you see in yellow is just that, that sidewalk connection between the uh apartment building, which would be a senior, a senior affordable d- building if I didn't mention that. Uh, so those folks could connect, could walk on sidewalk uh to Lyndale Avenue. Here's a certain image of the structured parking. And so with senior housing, uh, we do not have a structured parking or enclosed parking requirement uh like we do with uh non-age-restricted housing. Nonetheless, uh, the applicant is showing quite a bit, I think it's sixty-eight uh structured parking stalls uh below grade. Uh, es- essentially because it, they kind of have to. Uh, there really isn't, there just isn't enough land uh to surface park uh this, this intense of a development. And we also, one of the comments in the staff report was related to usable open space. That is a, that is not related to whether it's senior or non-age-restricted. That's based on zoning. There's a per-unit calculation that we make. And so this, there needs to be some massaging on the site plan um to identify maybe some other uh s- small spaces on the site that could be used for uh usable open space. But the majority of the usable open space is gonna come in the form of balconies. The city code gives a, essentially, open space bonus uh to incorporate balconies. And so that is a, a recommended condition um that they essentially just meet the, the standard. Uh, the opportunizing housing ordinance does allow a twenty-five percent reduction um of usable open space. The applicant would like to take advantage of that. Uh, but our recommendation is that they, they meet that standard once the OHO is taken into account. And another area that uh we'll be working with the applicant on, uh should you approve this tonight, is uh the landscaping plan. The building, it would be shifted towards a street, so much more urban character, which is something that we're supportive of. You know, twenty feet uh setback is, is more urban in character. Plus, it's a very significant building. So that would really change the character of that, that little pocket of the Lyndale Avenue corridor. But we think there could be some improvements, uh namely some uh more landscaping in between the building and the street to try and break up some of that mass, five stories, uh especially on the ground level. Without any landscaping, we think that could be, we think that could be improved. And so while the, the quantity of landscaping is compliant, we just have some design uh modifications that we'd like to see. Uh, again, street trees and then some, like some foundation plantings, but all, all very minor uh modifications. And here's this closer image showing just the area that's turf uh where we think um some additional landscaping can be incorporated. Touching on parking, uh, senior development has a, a very clear standard, and uh we also have a party room requirement. The applicant also would take advantage of a twenty percent OHO parking reduction. And so the base requirement is a hundred ninety-four stalls. The OHO uh reduces that to a hundred fifty-five stalls, and lo and behold, they're proposing a hundred fifty-five stalls. So they, they did the math uh in advance and, you know, wanted to meet the standard once the OHO uh requ- the flexibility was in place. Now we get some uh more interesting images. Uh, here's some building elevations of the Oxboro Heights. You can see, you know, really good-looking building, uh architectural concrete with glass, balconies, uh metal panels. Uh, so, you know, some interesting uh features uh where there's, there's nothing today. Another image, uh you can see the mix of materials. Uh, this is the east, would be the east elevation. Another image of the east elevation. These renderings are always a little uh, they always show full-grown trees and that, that's not, that tree is about a hundred years old. But anyway, um, another, just one more image of the, what the building would look like. There we go. So we are recommending approval. Uh, due to the proposed entitlements, we have four motions for you, uh recommended for you tonight. The first relates to the comp plan amendment, then the rezoning, third, the development plans, and then the, the plat. And so I'm happy to answer questions.
Oh, thank you, um, uh, Mr. Cincinero, um, uh for giving a, uh, there's a lot in there and then giving that very, very brief uh piece here. Uh, council, do you, we have questions here? Councilmember Dela Sutter?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. How are you tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Good to be with you. Would you go back to the elevation, uh, the just one back? Um, I'm just kind of curious, is, is there actually that much lawn there or is that just a rendering? I, it looked like it was pretty far, the, the parking area was actually pretty close to the neighbor's house. Is that, do I have that more correct?
Actumir, uh, council member, there isn't that much lawn.
Okay.
The, the three-dimensional graphics are, uh, they're great to, to depict what a building could look like. They're, you know, people don't get excited about two-dimensional black-and-white drawings, but the person doing those renderings are focused on the building. They don't really pay attention to what's around the building as much. And so you get kind of those quirks where it shows this big grassy lawn when there, there really wouldn't be much.
So if you could go back then to um one of the two-dimensional drawings that shows the residential properties that are to the east of the proposed, um, maybe go back to where it, you've, I don't even need those, the, where you have it plotted out, one, two, and three?
Sure.
I'm ju- um, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, let me, maybe I should just get to my question. Uh, apologize. Um, that house that's to the ri- the right of this picture, right? The house that's on Ninety-third to the east of this picture, how much distance is actually there between the properties? And I'm asking this because um, just tonight, in fact, we had a resident who was kind of blindsided, if you will, by the, the size, the, the enormity of a building adjacent to their property. Um, and I, I wanna be sensitive to that and try to mitigate that as far in advance of this as possible. So I'm just curious if you guys have looked at that, whether or not there's any conversation happening with the residents that are in that non-conforming industrial zone area, et cetera? And, and what maybe you could tell us about those conversations if they've happened?
Sure, absolutely, Actumir, uh, council member. It is something that we, we consider. Uh, you know, to give you a rough idea of what the, what that distance is, uh, it's probably, I would say, about a hundred feet, give or take. Uh, not super confident in that number, but uh just the parking itself, I know, is sixty feet. Uh, the, the two, the, the stalls, the lane and the stall is sixty feet. Then you have your setback, and then you have the setback to the east of the property line. So I'd, I'd say it's about a hundred feet.
Okay, and that is not an elevated parking area. The, those are underneath the building, is that correct? That's a, that's just a level pla- parking, open parking area?
Councilmember, the, the surface stalls that you see here are more or less at grade, so there isn't gonna be a, a dramatic change of the ground level up or down in this location.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And what, to, to address your question a little bit more, if you don't mind, uh, when we were evaluating the site, we were more concerned with the relationship between the building and the restaurant to the west. Uh, it's a drive-through. Uh, people use drive-throughs, especially nowadays, and that wouldn't go away. So we are very sensitive to uh what the impact could be uh with a drive-through close to residential property. And that's about eighty feet, the distance between the uh, the actual menu board and the building corner. And so uh, we have uh screening requirements, like a, a physical opaque fence uh that would exceed the height of the, in this case, it would exceed the, exceed the height of the menu board. Uh, but then we also asked the applicant and, and they would uh have dense landscaping with a lot of trees along that property line. So over time, it becomes less and less impactful uh with that type of use.
Other questions that uh folks may have? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick follow-up on that. Are there any mitigation efforts for light on the east side of the property to that residential?
Sure. Uh, Actumir, council member, uh, the main way that we mitigate light is by having very prescript, prescriptive lighting standards. And we confirm um compliance with that through a, a photometric plan review where the applicant would have a engineer or electric, electric contractor uh put together a lighting plan and tell us exactly what the lighting level would be at essentially every particular point on the site. And we have a maximum uh lighting level that can be at the property line uh to ensure that the, the light trespass is at an absolute minimum.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I, I was, um, and I appreciate that information. I was more concerned about headlights for cars parking that would be directly facing that residential property. So I assume that would not be part of that lighting study.
Oh, excuse me, uh, council member to the, to the south? Okay, sure. Okay, sure. Uh, Actumir, council member, there would be a, an, another opaque screening along the east property line, so that would, uh, that would obviously block the headlights.
Other questions that folks have? If there isn't, I have a few of my own. Uh, maybe some will arise, or maybe not. Uh, so I am, I did wanna go back to that industrial uh piece uh that you mentioned uh during your uh, uh presentation. Um, and, you know, you, certainly, when you uh sent it out uh this afternoon, uh you did kind of highlight that or talk about that, uh, which, which is in the comprehensive plan, and it's the, these areas include properties where existing industrial uses remain viable. Um, and I imagine that it hinged on viable, um, and I'll come back to that. Properties in the area should remain zoned for industrial use and uh rezoning to non-industrial districts should be avoided. And so, uh, you know, certainly I got that first part of the uh, of the sentence. But if we were to pass this tonight, uh, there's certainly gonna be an impact on the rest of those industrial uh properties that are, that are gonna be, there, there, there could be, let's, let's, let's say it that way. I think that's the, the more precise way to say it. And so I wanted you, I wanted staff to, you know, and certainly I can see, you know, it wasn't a viable. Um, but essentially, my understanding of when we, you know, we're, you know, and if you go earlier on in the uh, you know, in the uh comprehensive plan, it talks about that industrial obsolescence uh study. And if my, my uh recollection is correct, that that was the very idea that we were trying to avoid, that if you've got a property on the side of that that would, you know, in a sense, knock out those industrial areas, what you're essentially doing is you're, you're killing off your industrial area. So help me understand how that second part of that sentence isn't uh a part of that, how you kind of came to that?
A couple of thoughts, Actumir. Um, one additional policy, or I guess I'll expand on the protected industrial policy that's in the comp plan. Uh, there is another category, and that's uh, we specified protected industrial uh generally, but then we got into a little more detail on, well, do we mean that everywhere or do we wanna try and be uh mindful of the geography of industrial uses? And so there's another term, uh transitional areas. And Lyndale Avenue, for example, there's industrial properties on Lyndale, uh, there's industrial properties uh block east, two, three blocks east. And so we have a lot of these transitional areas. And so this transitional zone uh created the policy where, uh, we'll, we'll look at it on a case-by-case basis and see, does the uh pro- proposed redevelopment uh meet broader city policies? And in this case, we think it, we think it does. Uh, there could be some impact on industrial properties. Uh, certainly if um, a redevelopment, redeveloper wanted to combine a bunch of industrial properties for like, uh, you know, traditional heavy industry, that might not be, that might not be a possibility, depending on the characteristics of the redevelopment. Uh, that said, the majority of the industrial uses that we see in this area, uh, I don't believe that, that's going to uh be diminished uh by this development.
I mean, I, I think that's a, you know, a, a certainly interesting uh, uh take, and I And again, I understand we're just asking questions at, at this point, so I want to be, but certainly I do have some more questions about that. Are there other questions that the council may have come up with? Councilmember Del Sander?
Just a quick follow up. Since I looked at the Google map as a result of your comment, Mr. Acting Mayor. Was there any, was, that would leave just the one residential property left in that non-conforming area, right? And, and just for my identification, I am assuming those are non-conforming because they've been rezoned to industrial but were there prior. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Was there any conversation with either the developer or with the city and that final residential unit in this, in this process at all?
Actimere, councilmember, I have not personally spoke to the property owner or the resident. I think it is a rental property. I believe that the applicant has had conversations with all the surrounding property owners, so the applicant may have a better understanding of what, what questions they may have had. We also, as part of our development process, send out notices to property owners, identifying what the proposed project is and serve as a resource for questions that they may have. And I didn't receive any correspondence from that property.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions that we may have? All right. I'm getting to that. I do have one other question now. So in terms of the impact, let's say this thing is built. What, what is the impact to those properties that are around that? If this is voted on and passed through, what, what requirements for those industrial areas that, that are on the, the border of this development? What, what kind of impact would they see? And is there anything that we can do to mitigate that as we, as we move forward or not move forward today?
Sure. Actimere, the, the existing businesses will be able to operate as they have operated. You know, whether that is a, whether we're creating a legal non-conformity or is there an industrial user operating in compliance with the city code? What, it gets tricky when you have changes of uses that might bring in a new set of standards that we just don't know what that could be today. So there, there could be some complications with new industrial users in the future. There, but there is an impact from a setback perspective, where the city code has different minimum setbacks from a commercial or industrial building to the property line of the residential parcel. For commercial, it's 50 feet, for industrial is 100 feet. So in the future, if there's expansions, new redevelopments, they may need to seek flexibility from the city to potentially reduce those minimum setbacks. Alternatively, the city could change the setbacks as they apply to these sorts of areas. And that is something the, the planning division is looking into, especially along the Lyndale Avenue corridor. Because this might be, well, we, we dealt with this with Lyndale Flats to just to the southwest. And we're dealing with it here. But we hope we're going to have to deal with it a lot more along the Lyndale Avenue corridor in the future. So it, it does, it does make a lot of sense for staff to try and think about how we could reduce those potential impacts.
I appreciate that clarify, clarification. So what I hear is the setbacks really are the, the main impact today. But if, if, if a business, it's, you know, adjacent to it or bordering that, expansion, redevelopment, those all maybe, and I hear that staff is looking into that in terms of, and certainly saw that in the packet and that. And I just want to be clear, you know, certainly, you know, that we're, and we got some correspondence, or one correspondence on that. I, I do see that, that the developer is here. If there isn't any other questions here, I wonder if the developer would want to address the council at all in terms of, of this, this development? This is quite a bit of AMI diversity, as I might call, in terms of what is being proposed here to the council. And I certainly want to give you the opportunity to say anything that you'd want to say.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Chris Stoka, MWF Properties, 7645 Lyndale Avenue South. Just a couple of things. We did have conversations with the neighbor, the single family that will still exist here. Their only questions or comments to us were about screening, and that was before we implemented the fence around the perimeter. And we sent them the revised landscape plan, and they seemed satisfied with that. So we didn't approach them about purchasing the property because this site plan that you see here is actually site plan M. So we went through almost all the letters of the alphabet to try and make this work. And we didn't originally intend to purchase that property. But we talked to that owner, and they were willing to sell. And we were able to get a, a concept that worked for city staff and us. So it was quite a process. And, but we didn't end up, we were satisfied with what we had, so we didn't end up approaching that additional house. And then I know there was a comment in the packet from the, I believe it was Dentheads. And I did talk with him and said we were supportive if he wants to expand and needs anything, writing from us, because we don't want to impede upon his future plans for the property. So with that, I'm here to answer any additional questions that you have.
Does anyone else have any, any questions at all? Seeing that, well, thanks for coming to Bloomington, and thanks for, for this potential. We've got to see what we're going to do, but thanks for coming, and we'll see what happens here.
Thanks for your time.
If there aren't any other questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody on the phone?
Mayor, no one on the phone or online for the site.
I'll make a final call. I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Martin?
Oh, did you make the motion, or? I would make the motion to close the public hearing.
All right, second, I'll, I'll start digging. We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second from Councilmember Coulter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Carries six oh to close the public hearing. And if there aren't any further discussion, looks like we do have some. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on the TIF. Is that part of this project? And if so, can we get more information with regards to amounts and things like that?
Actimere, councilmember, unfortunately, I, I am not able to answer subsidy questions. The applicant might have a better idea of the, the ask, if you will. Otherwise, I'd have to look for other city staff to help us with that.
Well, we're gonna, looks like we're gonna figure it out between a couple of folks here.
Do you want to go first, Chris?
Ah, sure. Oh, this works too.
Yeah.
There will be a TIF request as part of this, but it's not here this evening. We're still working with the HRA and actually the Port Authority for the first time on this. And we, we discussed, we talked last week on it. And they're looking to see if we can add some additional 30% units. So we're, we're kind of trying to work through that, which we're supportive of. We just, as long as the numbers work. So that's where we're at. But it, I believe the current plan is to have it in front of you next month.
Is that?
That's fine.
If I remember right, is it two units that we have right now that are at the 30?
There's three.
Three, okay. Sure if it was two or three. Any other questions we have?
Mayor, also on the TIF, staff have calculated, looking at the information, and depending on if it's two or three or more units at the 30%, where that will take us. And then we would look, be looking to possibly use some of the 2019 C bonds, where we have that outstanding loan with Old Nation of Banks. We could draw down some of that. And this whole project needs to close before the end of the year. So hopefully, we can move this through so that we can close either late November, early December. But this is going to be coming at you in a lot of quick meetings.
Quick secession, as you might, you might say.
We need to close before the end of the year.
Well, that is. So thank you for that. If there are any questions, I'd go ahead and just make a statement here. You know, I, I wanted to just, just say I am just really excited about this. Just with the mix of, of different properties. I know we have really, as, as a council, tried to struggle to try to get in that, that 30% and that 50%. And I know that, Councilmember Coulter, I know you've been hammering away at this. And I, and I know that this is something that you're, you've been a real champion of, as all of us have in different ways. And I don't want to take that away from anybody else. And so I just am really excited to see that, that we're able to move forward with this particular construction. And I will be supporting this. I think it's great. I understand that we have industrial properties that are around that. But I do trust that staff is going to be able to work something out. We're going to see a lot more of that, of that as we work down Lyndale with the retrofits and all those types of things. And so I think this is just a necessary part of maturing as a city. And so I'll look forward to seeing what, what that looks like. And it's, it's great to hear that we've got neighbors talking to one another and working things out. And I think that's how a great city or a remarkable city, as we're trying to become, would move forward. I don't know if anybody else has any more comments on this at all? Councilmember Carter, work our way down.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So I echo your sentiments. I'm really excited to see this project and really appreciate the partnership that it seems that we've developed with you since Lyndale Flats. So I also just wanted to make a comment about the fact that it's senior affordable housing. We just had our joint school board and city council meeting last week where we heard about more, even more reasons why we want to continue to focus on making sure that we have options for seniors in our community. When I was, when I've talked to people, when I've door knocked, there are a lot of people who are aging in place in their homes, and they really are looking for these types of opportunities in Bloomington, specifically affordable opportunities. And so thank you for initiating this project. And again, just echo your sentiments about being excited, and so I will be supporting.
Others? Councilmember Del Sander?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Yes, I, I echo these sentiments, I think, making sure that we have affordable options for seniors who want to downsize their properties and, and move in, and, and stay in the area where they might be, you know, in, in multi-general, generational families, where they have grandkids in the neighborhood and things like that. Having that option for them is great. And, you know, I will say that, and any of us up here who are joggers will be very happy to see that sidewalk continuation around because it, it gets really challenging at times to be on the road and off the road. We were just having this conversation earlier, Councilmember Carter and I. So for all of the joggers out there, that's a good, that's a good extra. But thank you for thinking about that, right? These are the kinds of things that, if, if people who are watching can kind of see how, this is one example of how, when the city and its economic development and its, you know, housing authority and our business and entrepreneurs work together, we can get lots of things done at the same time, right? And so we're solving, solving for some senior housing, we're solving for some affordability, we're solving for some, you know, active transportation or alternative transportation and making the place more walkable. You know, we're doing lots of things at the same time. And I just really want to thank the staff and thank the developer and, and all who are working together to try to think about these things comprehensively like that. That's really important as we go into, especially, like you said, Acting Mayor, in these, these areas of transition. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I'm going to use a phrase that's always dangerous at a meeting like this. I was not planning to speak, but I, I think to Councilmember Del Sando's point, all of those things and more. And I think the other thing that, that I really, really appreciate about, appreciate about this development is it gets at a really awkward piece of land that just has not been developed. And it's now going to be something more useful and, and that will contribute better to our, our tax base and, and just overall community livability. And, you know, I think as we, as we think about redevelopment, and I've had a lot of conversations recently with folks about this, that that's ultimately what we're getting at, is what's the, what's the best way to, to use land in the city to meet our community's needs? And I, I think this gets at, at those things and, and that as well. So I am excited to see this move forward. And I actually, a number of years ago, used to live not too far from there. So I, I absolutely appreciate that this is going to be something now that's just much better overall for our community.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just figured since we have almost three hours and this is our last substantive item, I might offer a few comments. First of all, I, I support the land use and the entitlement process here that we're looking at tonight. I think this project makes sense. It's a good use of a very difficult property, like Councilmember Coulter just noted. As I've said before, I am growing more and more skeptical about TIF and how much we're having to utilize it to get affordable housing. In particular, knowing that we've met and exceeded a lot of our goals at the higher AMIs and have not on the lower AMIs. And so I would be open to looking at some market rate units in there to get into a higher number of 50 and 30% AMI units, looking overall at what that mix that we've already developed within the community. So, but along those lines, I know it isn't exactly pertinent to this question tonight, so I'll be very quick. It would be great from staff to understand that in the context of senior housing. Because I do think that is different than the overall mix. And if we could get some sense when that TIF is coming back, and as you're working with the developer on that, where we're at on, and I don't know that there are explicit goals related to senior and affordable, but if we could get some idea of what that mix of these senior units that have been developed in the community, what that mix has looked like. Again, I, I mean, I, I don't know that it makes a ton of sense for us to utilize a lot of TIF to build 300% of our goal at, you know, the higher AMIs and still never meet our lower AMI goals. So that's just, that's my only point on that. I support this. I think it's a great project and a really good use of a very difficult set of properties there. So that's all I got.
Anyone else? All right. With that being said, would anyone like to move this?
I think we should share though, because there's four of them, right?
Oh, no. You've got to take it all at once. We could certainly, sure, we could do whatever folks want to do.
Happy to make the first motion.
All right.
How about that?
Here we go.
In case PL 2022, 15, one, boy. Let's try it, see by the fourth one, I'll have it down. Pardon me. In case PL 2022, 153, I move to adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive land use guide plan amendment to re-guide 600 West 93rd and 9216 Garfield Circle from community commercial to high density residential and 520 West 93rd from industrial to high density residential.
Second.
We've got a motion from Councilmember De La Sondro and a second from Councilmember Martin. It's a resolution amending the City of Bloomington 2040 Comprehensive Plan to re-guide 600 West 93rd Street and 9216 Garfield Circle from a community commercial to high density residential land use designation and 520 West 93rd Street from industrial to high density residential land use designation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Actimere, I can keep it moving.
Councilmember Martin?
I will move in case 2022-153, we adopt an ordinance rezoning 600 West 93rd and 9216 Garfield Circle from B2 general business to RM50 PD high density residential plan development and 520 West 93rd from I3 general industrial to RM50 PD high density residential plan development.
We have a motion and a second to rezone a couple of different properties here. I'm just going to summarize that there. I'm not going to reread that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Carries six zero to rezone those two properties. Who's next?
I'll move to approve preliminary and final development plans for a five story, 125 unit senior affordable apartment building 520 and 600 West 93rd Street and 9216 Garfield Circle, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval of the preliminary and final development plans for this Oxboro Heights development. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Passes six zero. All right. Who's last? Councilmember Carter?
Going to keep the trend going here. Going to keep the trend going here. I move to approve a type three preliminary plat and adopt a resolution approving the plat of Oxborough Heights.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve a type three preliminary plat adopting resolution. And I'm just assuming there is no discussion about this. I've skipped that, but there's no discussion. If not, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carries six zero to approve the type three preliminary plat. Is there anything more? No, there's not. That's it. All right. So now we will move to, thank you, staff, for that presentation. We'll move to our final part, which is our city council policy and issue updates. We'll cover the listening sessions, report, updates to the council by city manager, and then council issue identification. And so we did have three folks that did come to address the council during the listening session. Our first, and I'm not sure if we can use names, so I'm going to, I can use names. Okay, I wasn't sure if I could use names or not. But we had one resident that came before us, Nett Robinson. And her concern was for members of her family that are located outside of one of our fire stations. And her main concern is just with how the communication was handled with respect to how the fire station was built, the size, the impact of what that, what that building would mean for the property. There's a concern about market value dropping as this is built. The expectations were not as how either her or her family members saw that. And so even around noise and just some of the way that the construction was being done, it's very dusty, it's very loud. And so as we move forward, she is hoping that discussions can be had and conversations can be had to try to improve how we work with other developments within the city. Is there anything I missed with that team? All right. Moving on to our second person, Sally Ness came before the council. And really, what she brought forward is, again, highlighting the importance of accurate information for the council as they get ready to try to make decisions. That was important to her that she used a couple of examples to demonstrate what she was talking about in terms of accurate information. In fact, she had mentioned several items around that and the importance of staff also providing accurate information to council as well. And that when council makes decisions that, like we've seen this evening, that when you have a conversation after the public is no longer a part of it, that we're careful about how we follow that, that process. And then finally, we had Andrew Thule that came before us to have conversation around a recent decision regarding artistry. And we wanted to be sure that we were properly following our oversight, as we have a couple of members who are a part of that artistry, which is a nonprofit board that has had some fiscal or financial trouble and had given us some advice in terms of some recommendations around how we handle who is on those particular boards and staffing. And then just making sure that we, to remind council that we are fiscally responsible with regards to taxpayer resources. Is there anything I missed those last two? I didn't think so. All right. Then I think we'll turn then to our acting city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, members of the council. Just a few items. On October 6th, at 1:00 PM is the celebration of Winstead Way and near the Convergent Sculpture. It's the celebrate the renaming of 28th Avenue in Bloomington South Loop in honor of former Mayor Gene Winstead. The public is invited but is encouraged to register. And you can find that on the events page on the city's website. A note of success for the city attorney, we have successfully identified two staff people to serve as both the compliance manager and the compliance paralegal. And so you will see, start to see more and more work with regard to earned sick and safe leave and other items related to compliance within legal departments. That's progress and that's been, I'm sure, a load off of the city attorney's plate. The other thing I wanted to mention is that there is a, the city council has received a number of emails and conversations related to panhandling and some concerns around safety in the community around panhandling and recognizing that that is, it's an issue that has come up on several emails. And I've asked the city attorney to kind of prepare sort of a little summary with a little bit of context for why this is emerging now potentially as an issue and what the, I don't want to say legal advice, but legal standard might be for panhandling in the community.
Mayor, Acting Mayor and members, so federal appellate courts have consistently held that panhandling and any conduct that could be construed as panhandling is First Amendment protected speech. This has been consistent holding of the courts for quite some time. The speech and the expressive conduct that comprise begging merit First Amendment protection is generally speaking, the holdings. So when courts review the constitutionality of statutes and ordinances regulating panhandling and related begging type of activities, courts commonly comment that other non-speech based statutes or ordinance still apply in a situation where other parts of the person's conduct is illegal. So for example, there are times when people that are panhandling or otherwise requesting financial assistance from motorists will block the roadway or stand in a location that is not safe or allowed for pedestrians, in which case that conduct is illegal and otherwise prohibited. But the, but the act of requesting money or financial assistance, panhandling, that part of their behavior is protected speech. So there are parts of the conduct that is illegal and subject to interactions with police and other parts that are not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question. Councilmember DeSandro.
Just, I wanted to clarify. Thank you, Acting Mayor. So Ms. Manderscheid, we didn't pass any law, we didn't change any ordinance, we didn't do anything different. This came up because there was some state description or it just emerged out of some court proceedings? I mean, why is it on people's radar right now is kind of what I'm trying to understand? Because I know that as a council member, we didn't do anything different. So I'm kind of curious, why now? Why is it coming up at this moment? Do you have any idea?
Mayor Potem, sorry, Acting Mayor. Mike's giving me a hard time earlier on for speaking Latin. Acting Mayor and council members, no, the council has not taken any action. The, there are lots of times in the practice of law that you give advice to your client and we periodically give advice on all kinds of topics. In this case, the law has not changed. There have been, you know, I'm sure multiple opportunities for the police to engage with people that are engaging in this conduct in all of our communities around here. So if there was a particular incident that gave rise to an interaction with the police or a community member or something, I'm not aware of that specific interaction. But we give advice to our clients all the time about all kinds of topics, so.
Thanks for that. Anything else you have?
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. As you guys are getting ready to come up with anything you may have, I wanted to just mention, since I've got the floor, that I am having my town hall form when I will transform from being an acting mayor back to being a city council member where I belong, Thursday, October 6th, at 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Minnesota Valley Unitarian University Fellowship. That's 10715 Zenith Avenue. It is certainly the first district forum, but that doesn't mean that if you want to join us from across the city or from somewhere else, you're certainly welcome to join us this Thursday from 6:30 on. With that being said, is there other items that folks want to cover? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief Hodges and the Bloomington Police Department for their work on the biggest, one of the largest fentanyl busts in state history. So I think it was 108,000 pills. And I know you said during the press conference, enough to kill a fifth of the state's population. So as a human being, I think we can all say that we're super grateful and especially as a parent who is terrified about everything related to drugs, but specifically fentanyl and seeing what's happening, what's doing to young people across our state, just feeling really grateful. So thank you. And please extend our thanks to those involved. That's what I got.
Not sure if chief wants to say anything at all, or? You know, and, you know, you know, and, you know, our Councilmember Carter also serves at large statewide with health policies as well. So certainly understand that impact in terms, I know a number of us have also served in different varieties. So we know this is an important issue. Amazing story, too, I hear.
Well, unfortunately, we, after that, we had another overdose death. So we're at 13 and we had, we're still investigating one today and that may be 14. So we have exceeded the record in Bloomington. So I mean, it was a good effort by us, but this drug again is one, and I know it sounds cheesy, but you know, you get high, you die. And I wish people would just really get that through their heads because people are dying every day from this. But if they keep, everybody we catch, you can be assured we will be taken to jail.
Well, thank you, Chief. And thank you, Councilmember Carter, for bringing that and reminding us of how important it has been. It's been pretty active for the police as of late. And we thank you, as Councilmember Carter said, for the work that you've done. I know that this evening, we also during our consent agenda items, also received our opioid settlement funds as well that can be utilized to help us do additional items. And we've got a number of other health-related items that were on there. I know this has been certainly a priority for this council. There is an inner connection between health and policing and environment and all those types of things. And so we want to be mindful in terms of what we do with that. City manager?
Thank you, Acting Mayor and council members. I know that Chief Hodges was, talks about the 13 potential deaths in the community overdoses. I think there's a statistic that he often doesn't share, which is the number of times that police officers intervene and are able to save a life. Can you share that statistic?
Well, I think, don't hold me to this, but I think this year we are at 64, 63 saves this year so far. So, yeah.
That's certainly incredible. Well, that's a good note to leave it on, don't you think? 64 saves. I think that's a good one. Councilmember DeSandro?
I would agree. Acting Mayor, 64 and 13 is probably a record that'll keep you in the job for a little longer. So good job. But, but no, those 13 people who die of these things are real people with real families and, you know, so I don't make light of that. It was prescient that that happened on the heels of our joint conversation with the school board because that was one of the longest, the topics that we spent the longest time talking about as a group. It's on the mind of everyone here. So thanks again for what you all do. I had a different topic altogether, if that's okay. Great. First, first thing I wanted to mention was just an allusion to the, to item 3.9 that we passed in consent agenda. Just a shout out to all the folks who signed up to be election judges again for the general election. Really, really important work. A plug, shameless plug for voting early if you want to right here in Council, at Civic Plaza. Elections matter. And we, I have the utmost faith in Ms. Gipione and our clerk's office and what they do to ensure the integrity of our elections. And all of you who signed up to be an election judge are a big part of that. So thank you very much for the work that you're performing. And the only other thing I wanted to say, it's kind of a shameless plug on my own, I guess. So we, we had a lot of conversations about the assessments for the pavement management program and everything. Back in the summertime, I made a kind of a, I don't know, impassioned plea to kind of look at putting, putting us on a plan to consider how we expand the scope of what we do around management programs and our, and everything to consider alternatives to just paving and repaving. And, you know, the gentleman that came up today kind of made me think about it. I don't know anything about how to determine whether or not a road needs to be repaired or not repaired or whatever. But, you know, I want to really ask you all to consider as we go into the next year and everything, what you think we can do around our pavement management program. And, you know, I think there's less than 14 miles left of Bloomington to be curbed and gutted. So like, what do we do with that money when it's only a curbing gutters? Because it's a million or more dollars every year in our budget. And, you know, can we do something more active, transport oriented or get up to code with ADA or, you know, do some climate mitigation or all of the above? We just need to be thoughtful about that. And, you know, I, for one, as a homeowner, as somebody who uses our roads, would not mind if my road went three months longer than the plan if it meant that I, we got a nice trail or we got an accessible something or other or, you know, a native prairie or that kind of thing. I know I'm not alone in that. I know that there's people who disagree with me on that. But, but, you know, I'd like to just, I, if I'm one person, it won't get done. So I know I need to appeal to all of you on that front. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to say something. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I wasn't able to tell if it had other nodding heads. I certainly am nodding my head on that in terms of looking at that. So I just want to see if there's other nodding heads. And it seems like, you know, we've got some nodding heads and that would be something that we may want to certainly bring forward. Are there other items? There's one last thing that I have. There was a, there was an email out there about the carts that we recently just put together. Attention to the name of that, the little motorized scooters.
Bird scooters, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I always call them carts. They're not carters. I know, right? That is making all I say. So I'm just curious about, is, has there been, I mean, I only saw that one email. Has there been a big deployment or concern about those carts? Is there a problem going on there? Or is it just, you know, I just read the one and I just, I haven't had a chance to look. I'm not getting a lot of phone calls, but I want to just be sure there isn't an issue. I think it was something with Nicollet Avenue. There was a cart sitting down or sideways or?
Acting Mayor, council, I think what's being referred to are the recent deployment of bird scooters. You remember, we went through kind of a process of changing our ordinance to kind of allow them pretty much citywide. My understanding is that company had deployed 50 scooters across the city, kind of a range of them. Frankly, I think what they're trying to do is to determine where in the city their, the demand is the greatest. And they're kind of trying a number of areas and keeping track. And I think we'll see sort of some changes. They have authorization through the agreement with them for up to 200 scooters. We have received a handful of calls on the staff level. Couple people that were just wondering why there's a scooter in their front yard. There was a few of those. But for the most part, I would kind of characterize it as a rather small amount of feedback about the scooters. And we are monitoring them, keeping track of the number and types of feedback they were receiving. But generally, I would consider it to be rather small.
Thanks for that, that feedback. And so if, if there are any issues or maybe there's some things that folks want to say nicely about it, would they call the city or would they call if there's?
Yes, I think they could call the city. And the gentleman in our staff is Brian Hanson, the same gentleman who talked this evening about assessments. He's been handling that. Or just make a general call to the city and they would forward it to our engineering department.
Well, thank you. If there's anything else regarding that, or I'm good with that. If there is anything else, I'd look for a motion to
If there is anything else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn early here.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? There is none? That will move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.